Stand for the pledge. Leslie, roll call please. Counselor Augsberger?
Here.
Counselor Bronson?
Here.
Counselor Hagy?
Here.
Counselor Richards?
Here.
Counselor Sanchez? President Pro Tem Thorsten?
Here.
Mayor Coleman? Present. Let the records show that there are six present and one absent. We are going into a work session regarding employee evaluation process. So I'll head it over to staff.
May I just make sure that it's?
Do votes since?
Oh, I just wanted to make sure that Counselor Sanchez was.
We can't vote until the regular session, so she'll be excused then.
Okay, yeah, apologies.
No, no worries. Needs to be explained.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, Council, good evening, or afternoon, rather. Thanks for joining us tonight for this work session regarding the employee evaluation process. And I asked City Attorney Larson just to kind of give a kind of a high level summary of his findings again. I know he's already communicated it once, but I thought it'd be a good refresher and reminder, and then we'll hand it off to you all for some discussion or to ask questions.
Thank you. So just how we got to where we are now. You had asked me to research some options for you for evaluations. As you are aware, the only employees that the council directly appoints are the city manager, the city attorney, and the municipal court judge. In this case, I've only been given any direction regarding the city manager and the city attorney. What I presented in the past has been kind of an overview of how many other cities do it. There's a wide variety of options for you. Most cities seem to do just a council evaluation of the city manager on a number of topics. As for the evaluation of the city attorney, that's a little bit more difficult to find for cities our size because it is unusual for a city our size to have a direct employee. And so, but they, most of those that I've been able to find are somewhat similar, where there are categories that the employee is rated on by the city council. There was some request for additional options when it comes to getting a fuller picture of the performance of the employee. And there is a trend toward what are known as 360-degree evaluations, which they vary from city to city, but what they do is incorporate the input of other people besides the council, ranging from a self-evaluation by the employee to a evaluation included that gives input from those that the employee directly supervises, to even some cities incorporate some evaluations from local business owners and community groups and things like that. So there are many options available to you. What I provided for this meeting was kind of based on your feedback, and it includes some documents from the city of Silverton, Klamath Falls, and Lebanon. And, oh, Staton was another. And each of those seem to have a bit more meat to them when it comes to what you had in mind. The, the main questions that I would recommend that you talk about and discuss amongst yourselves tonight is really what are the, what are the areas of expertise or categories or traits that you would like to evaluate the city manager and the city attorney on? There's some examples given to you. They range from things like leadership, organizational management, financial management, that kind of thing, as well as expertise in different areas. So those, those kind of, I recommend you flesh out. And then when it comes to any additional input that you're seeking besides yourselves, how far does that go? What, who, who would you like to include in an evaluation? And there's pros and cons to all of it, but it's, it's all within your, within your authority. The only caveat is that both the city attorney, the city manager, and myself have employment contracts. And so depending on what the evaluation is that you want to do, they, those contracts may need to be modified in order to accommodate that new evaluation process. But that's something to be determined after I think you've landed on what you'd like to do. And I can take any questions and, and that, on that last point, I myself am, when it comes to being an employee, employees benefit from evaluations just as much as the employer benefits. And it's an opportunity for very, for expectations to be made clear so that the employee knows how to perform well, or what, you know, what they're going to be measured on. Because what you measure is what's, is what gets improved. And, and so I, speaking for myself, am perfectly happy to discuss with you and to find ways to, to measure what I do. And I'm, I'm happy to discuss that and take any questions because I, I want to perform well just as you would like me to perform well.
And I would echo that. I would say the same thing, so.
All right, Council. So we have before some examples, and we need to have a great discussion on what we would like to do moving forward. So we can come up with a clear process, as I said, so that we can have clear expectations that they can meet.
Uh, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I do really like the one from Silverton.
What do you like about it, Counselor Richards?
Clean and just precise and pretty easy.
It also kind of breaks down each one of the categories. It's not just like a communication rate, you know, it's stuff inside there. And with the numbering, you know, if we send it out, you know, us, staff members, management, community members, you can really get like a good number. You're not going to just get stuck on, you know, one-twos or threes, or it's going to give you a better range, a more accurate rating, I think.
Okay, any other thoughts regarding ones in front of us?
Well, I echo what my fellow counselors have said. City of Silverton's went very thorough. I like, you know, the in-depth, you, of, of the questions and answers. You could really get a good reading. It wasn't just yes or no, or, you know, one way or the other. You know, it was, you really could take it to a degree. You know, but each situation, you know, there's a lot to it, but it was in a way that it really gives a lot of information out there. And I think it's a pretty good tool.
Okay, great. I like getting input from multiple stakeholders because, you know, we all work for all the taxpayers here in town. And so I feel like getting input from various different folks that either work with you on a daily basis or see the interactions in the community really gives us a perspective that we don't see up here. So I really like that component.
Okay, so I'm hearing you like Silverton. That's great. That was easy. So would you like to continue with the same topics that they came up with? As far as leadership, intergovernmental relations, public relations, personal traits, fiscal management, city council relations, achievements?
The only other one I could maybe think of is like just goals, yearly goals, maybe? Unless we can fit that into one of, one of these, you know, the goals are set, you know, how are you, you know, we should be measured on that, how we're doing with those.
Okay. Another component that I really like, I'm not sure if it's in the Silverton one or not, is giving them a chance to self-reflect also, so we can, we can have that input. I like that. Not sure if it's here in Silverton's or not.
Any other comments regarding this? I like incorporating the goals as well, as that's something that we work on to try and see what we're going to do and accomplish for a year. So I think that in the Silverton section, it says achievements related to objectives. It does say goals and objectives there, so we would clarify that a little bit further. I think that would work underneath that topic. I also like the, having the 360 with different groups specifically. And please feel free to speak up what your thoughts are regarding this, but I was thinking department directors for the city manager and for the attorney, I think because you interact with the department directors as well. I think that Silverton says they do some community members. What are your thoughts on that as counselors?
Madam Mayor, I think that's a really good idea.
Yeah, okay. If we were to do that, do we need to discuss who those are? Or how do we evaluate what, what community members get included in that? Because that could get really sticky, I think, so. Any thoughts?
I guess we could just pick them out of a basket.
I don't see why we couldn't just open it up and then folks that want to give feedback could give feedback. I mean, maybe not selecting exactly who we give them to in the community, but if you have input that you'd like the council to hear, because I'm sure, I mean, you guys both do really good work for our community, and I'm sure that folks would want to share that with us. And then as City Attorney mentioned, you know, we all want to know what areas we can improve in. So of course, you know, taking all input into account. I feel like on things like this, the more we can get, the, the, the better picture we have. Because again, we only see you all a couple of times a month. Just my thoughts, though. I'd love to hear what everyone else thinks.
One, one item I would recommend, a little caution, is there is a tendency, a human tendency, to self-select yourself into certain groups. Those, you know, for example, someone who has a, gets a lemon vehicle is more likely to harshly criticize the, the brand that that vehicle came from, or, or something like that. So the interaction that the individual has can greatly color and, and encourage them to be quite loud with. And, and that's not to say we want to avoid such folks, but we do want to make sure that we have a broad base of, to select from. And so when you open it up to everyone to, who has, you're, you're basically asking who has beef with the city. And that's, that is a, a bit of a concern, I guess.
Yes, and to your point, oftentimes the people that are satisfied are the most silent. So, yes, we, we may want to just consider that.
Well, in that same vein, you know, it's an important tool, but we need to understand and put in the language going forward that that's just one tool in the basket, knowing full well that it's going to be skewed coming in, either I love them, or if you're happy right now, I can say much at all, or if you don't like them, or you just don't like anybody in a position of power, you're going to speak accordingly. So I, we just need, you'll keep it framed within that, that, you know, it's a tool, but it's not the only tool.
It's a good perspective.
I like having the community input on this, but I'm just a little bit concerned that we have 10,000 people. And there would be a lot of time to go through all of that. I think it's possible. Will it happen? Probably not, but something we have to think about. That's a lot of time, a couple of work sessions to go through, lots of documentation.
And staff time, but?
And staff time.
Yeah, and I'm not against the idea. I just want to make sure we work, consider all ramifications of that. And we could also think of specific groups of people. For instance, leaders in the community, leaders of different school, or fire, or it, leaders that city manager interacts with on a regular basis, to ensure that the city is maintaining relations with key figures in the community.
Going on, going forward with that question of essentially input from the general public. I think if you framed it, whether it's just not just a open comments, that you give them some framework to work with, you know, how is the job? And where it's a rating thing, like one to five, you know, negative to positive, it's in the middle, that's good. You know, where it's a series of, you have questions, you're looking for answers, and some room for open form comments. But if you frame it going in, then you're getting a better idea. Okay, on this specific area, those from the general public who have answered back feel this way. And, you know, and so you get a spectrum. You're going to have some extreme left, extreme right, good, negative, that, negative, whatever you want to call it. But if you give those are participating, you know, a tool to work with, with some structure, I, I think it'd be a more useful tool, you know, the information coming back.
Madam Mayor, I'm just curious, when we did the community survey, how many people got back to us on that?
Three hundred.
Yeah, so like if we did send out something like this, you know, most likely we wouldn't necessarily have more than, theoretically.
Theoretically.
But it.
Yeah, it just depends on how well the communication is too. But I noticed that in the process, at least in Silverton's process, it gave no more than two weeks to return that, which would also limit the number of responses we would get. And I think it's important to put a tight deadline on that just because you don't want to drag these things out, and it does take time from staff.
Yeah.
So, so we have a process, we are looking at the same list that Silverton is looking at. The numbering system was, I, I heard was positive, the rating scale, I mean. So, and handing it out to department directors and making it available to community members. What type of? Are there any other changes you would like to see made in the process? Silverton's process is on the first page there, and I think there's a process for Klamath Falls. I mean, it's really a self-evaluation form, but you can see the process of it there. That's towards the back, and I believe Staton's is in there as well.
I think it might be helpful if we can kind of determine, okay, what's a, what's a three look like? Is it three like, hey, you come to, you come every day, do your job, you know? No more, no, no, no more, no less. You know, is a five like, hey, you should be in a bigger city, you know, running bigger stuff, stuff like that. Because, I mean, my three versus somebody else's three, or my five, you know, somebody gets, if we hand these out and they just go five, 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 like, you know?
Five, all five is not very helpful usually, so, yeah. So that.
I was just going to say to your point there, I know in the police realm, when we have officers that are in training, every day, a training officer will fill out an evaluation form. And if I remember correctly, it's rated, you know, one to five. And really, anytime you get a three, I mean, you're, you're good to go. I mean, you're operating with, you know, policies and procedures, and just you're doing your job. You're doing a great job. And anything below that usually gets documented, and anything above that will get documented. So that's how we kind of run it at the, at the PD, is like right in the middle is, you're doing great, you know?
Yeah, there's a skill included in the, the Silverton model here. And, and whether you want to adopt that or not, it's available as well. You could modify it to whatever changes you see, see fit. But the one is unsatisfactory. It's, it's an inadequate performance in that top, in that area. Two is that improvement is needed. Three is that meets the standard. This, you're, you're fulfilling your job description. Four is you exceed the job description, you exceed that standard. And then five is simply outstanding, you know, you're like Counselor Hagy said, you're, you're appropriate for bigger things, you know, kind of idea.
So looking at that rating scale, which is on the third page of our packet, are you guys satisfied with that rating scale? It looks like, let's Silverton again. We can make adjustments to that? What are your thoughts? It sounds like the city manager and city attorney are good with that, so maybe we just move forward.
Yeah, I'm fine with it. I like it.
Okay, so what I understand is we've got the rating scale, we've got the sections. Are we going to keep the same specifics underneath each section? Would we like to adjust that? I also think we need to consider, are we going to use this evaluation process for both city manager and city attorney? Or are we going to use some of the examples that are in here for the city attorney, which are a little bit different because he has a different job and interacts with a different group of people?
I kind of want to implement the, the questions for staff regarding city attorney to implement it to the city manager as well. And it's key to me being involved with a couple of these already that I would like to hear from staff on how they think about management, which we've never really had before. So that's key for me.
I agree with that. I think hearing from staff is an important component.
I also agree.
So, City Attorney Larson, do you know the process? Is this just something that, like, a counselor takes with them and then asks the city staff? Is that what, how that, or is it just?
The, the best model for something like this is to have more of an electronic survey that is more anonymous. Because that way, both the person taking it feels more comfortable giving an honest assessment. And you don't have, you know, the direct interaction that can, it can cause some unpleasantness or, or maybe skew results, things like that, so.
How are we going to establish anonymity? Because I know that even in those things that are anonymous, the person who administers them sees everything, so.
I believe there are third-party websites and, and surveys of different kinds that, that can, that you can essentially send the link out to anybody you want to invite to take it. And there's no personal information taking from, taken from them when they're doing it. Now, occasionally there are open-ended questions, and people can write things, and sometimes you can figure out who somebody is from that open-ended question, but that's really up to the person taking the survey to, to determine. So there are, there are certainly ways of, of doing it.
I've administered surveys before. Yeah, there's also ways of knowing who's signing itself.
It, it does, it does lead to a little bit of concern of, well, you know, we put this link out there, and we hope that the person who we send it to is the one actually taking it.
Actually taking it, right.
So you'd want to be careful with whatever vendor you select or, or software you use to, to ensure there's some way of verifying the, the person who's actually taking the, the assessment. But I mean, I don't think anything is ironclad. But I, I, I think that's also, you can also protect the integrity of the whole process with, you know, your, the weight that you assigned to certain things. I think I, I mentioned in the memo that I sent out, there's certainly a mob mentality that you want to guard against because we've all seen how you, you get a few negative comments on Facebook that suddenly there's a deluge of negative comments on this one topic. We don't want to find ourselves in a similar situation with a professional evaluation. So having an appropriate weighting of the participants and also being careful with who you select to, to do the evaluation. For example, suppose you're in, in a, in a situation where you're doing an evaluation, and the city manager just barely concluded union negotiations with both of the unions. And then you go follow up that with a survey to city staff, asking what they think of the city manager. You're probably going to get some skewed results, you know, and that's, but, but obviously, he's, he, he might have been performing his job perfectly and been a, a, a five on your scale. And then from that perspective, it's ones all across the board. That's, that's what, that's an extreme example, but that's just what you want to guard against with. My recommendation would be not necessarily a survey that is open to all employees, but there's a, a random assortment that are selected in some way. Similarly, with the community, as an employee, I would want to be rated on the people that I interact with and not people I've never, who, who, who've never met me. And so, and also, well, there's a lot of people I interact with that I wouldn't want evaluating me because they're doing community service and, and have a bunch of fines because I prosecuted them. So, you know, who, who you pick is, is very important. And I, I think Jason and I could each probably give a lot of examples of the, of the people that we tend to interact with through the course of our duties. And I would recommend that the, that the surveys be limited to those folks. If you want to get an overall picture of how the community as a whole feels, I, I think, you know, the city's performance as a whole is something you, you would want to survey the entire populace on. Because a lot of them, they're going to, they're going to rate the city manager based on how they feel about the entire city, from the, the person who came and read their water meter and to the officer that pulled them over, you know? And granted, the city manager certainly has an effect on those people, but he's, he's not solely responsible for that person's interaction.
I think that those points need to be considered because it sounds like at this point in time that we are going to be passing out evaluations to 10,000 people. So maybe we can hone it down a bit. So counselors, department directors? Do we randomly select some city staff instead of all city staff? How many city staff members are there?
How many are there?
About seventy.
Okay.
That's seventy evaluations to go through. So maybe we consider a number, or how would we choose that? And then, and if you open it up to the, the general populace, that's who knows how many, so thoughts?
I'm an advocate of staff, so we can pick a number from staff. That's key to me because, yes, I agree with, you know, most of your interactions with the city is most likely not going to be all good. Mad at the water bill, or mad at this, or whatever. But I think we should be able to give the public an opportunity to voice their concerns. However, we do that, could be electronically, where they could just do an online survey. It averages everything, and we can get an idea about that, but I'm more concerned about staff.
I agree with, I agree with you. I think having staff voices. I wouldn't be opposed to all seventy. I'm sure that the, the link could give us. I wouldn't be opposed to all 70. I'm sure that the, the link could give us an average. I mean, I think those are the folks that you work with most often. I, I agree with what he said.
I think the staff definitely most important. And the number of 70, well, the key people that runs a city. So I'm not concerned about all 70 of them filling out an application. I think that as far as surveying or the general population of a city. I wouldn't use the same format. I would, you know, you, you go with a system that can be computer gathered. You know, it's a computer doing the work, but you put it in a format of the rating where you're getting an overall big picture of how the employee is doing, but we're not trying to answer the same questions as what we are from our employees. Their feedback, we're trying to get, you know, how is this employee, our city manager or our city attorney doing with their job? So I wouldn't use the same format. I wouldn't use the same questions. That's for sure. But use something that's like a one to five rating. Don't like it, you like it, somewhere in between. That kind of gets the big picture of things. And it can be easily tabulated by a computer. So if you had 2,000 responses, the computer doesn't care. It just cranks out the info. Just my thoughts.
I use AI for everything now.
So that's a good idea.
Okay. So what I hear you guys saying is you'd like to proceed with all of staff and and are they going to receive a shortened version of this questionnaire, like the one that's in the back that Lebanon uses? Or are we going to have the full detailed evaluation that's at the front of the packet?
I was thinking about the Lebanon one, six questions.
And just to clarify, are you speaking about both positions for the employee survey or just the manager or?
Employees don't really deal.
I was going to say, the vast majority of our workforce is never going to have a city attorney.
I only want the ones serving, remember the ones that he puts in jail.
I give me a jail cell and I'll go along with that.
I mean, so let's finalize, we're going to finalize city manager process and then we'll make sure that we have a better clarity on the city attorney process. So for counselors, they'll have the evaluation that's from Silverton. That's in the front of the packet. For city staff, they have the one from Lebanon. If I'm hearing this correctly, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes.
Right?
The one that's city attorney? Or is there a separate one?
It says city attorney. This is, but this is the format that he's suggesting.
Sure. And then on the back, there's additional questions that would pertain if we use the same format. Okay. So we're looking at one through six.
One through six on the one that says city attorney would be used for city manager or staff, if I understand that correctly.
Yeah. On the back is mainly attorney questions.
Correct. But maybe with the same numbering system as the evaluation that we are using?
Yeah, I think it's possible. I mean, just want to know like communication, are things being done in timely manner? You know, accuracy. I mean, there's a lot of things like in the past, we've been told that everything's great and it wasn't. So I don't want to have to do that again.
Could we use the, like the headings from the Silverton one as those six questions? Like, you know, per, well, like leadership, you know, maybe break that down. Okay, leadership. Yeah.
I like that idea. So that kind of is the same. Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be along the same lines of what we're doing. But it'd just be like a, like an overview, like it's not broken down into each one of these, but it's like, hey, leadership. You know, leadership involves motivating others, you know, kind of break that down and just give one number. That'd be easier. And maybe give, I do like your idea of like, like the fire district, you know, the chief, you know, all the, those kind of heads of people that, you know, maybe give them maybe the more detailed, you know, for just those handful of people. I'm just, you know, people that are, you deal with every day or more often than, but.
Okay. So what are you guys' thoughts on do, using the Silverton evaluation process and just the headings there for staff?
That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Trying to get to clear direction here. So for city manager, we want, we would like to use the process that's established by Silverton and their ratings scale as well as their evaluation. And a shortened version with just the highlights, the headings for staff to receive. And yeah. And at the same time, a community survey regarding the city manager or just a community survey regarding the entire city?
I think others are have more input for the community. I just.
Rating the city manager. So that's what it should be.
Okay. So you'd like a community survey regarding the city manager's performance?
Correct.
And where would that be? Would it be posted up just on social media?
I think it should be.
Water bill?
Water bill?
That's a good idea.
You put the information out with all that water bill, gets all the households, but it's got to be taken through a computerized system. Can't be written, you know, it's got to be a way and a means so we can efficiently tabulate and evaluate the information.
Okay.
We use the same format as the staff, like those shortened kind of boom, 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 boom.
Yeah.
Definitely.
That, that gives you spreads. It gives you the big picture.
I mean, should we cap it at a number? I mean, a thousand people is was that 10%? No.
How many water bills do you send out?
I don't know off the top of my head, but several hundred.
So if I may, if I was city manager, which I am not, I would have a hard time with my performance being rated by folks who just got their bill.
That's fair.
Yeah. It certainly puts people in a certain frame of mind. And, and so it has a little, little touch of unfairness in my, my view.
I totally agree. What if we do it just to survey? I mean, I mean, if we just do one, that's not, we get the numbers, but that's not in our consideration. I mean, it doesn't have to be linked to any, any water bill. It can just be something that we do.
One, one thing you might keep in mind is that because the vast majority of people in Sweet Home don't have direct interaction with the city manager. There's, there's really no reason, you, if you want to have that input included in the process. I think that there's plenty of cities that, that ask their citizens how they're doing on a regular basis. Regardless, not directly tied to any one employee, but just general surveys that are checking the polls. And this is a common practice. Such, if we were to get into the habit of doing that regularly in some cost effective way that people were used to filling out, it gives you a, it could give you consistent data over time. That metric could be included in a, in an evaluation process if it's properly weighted and put into perspective. That, because you, you want the performance of the city to improve, right? That's, that's part of the city manager's job. And you want, in, in the perceptions that the community has of that, that's a valid, that's valid information. And, and so people certainly have experience with how they feel about the city. They may not have direct experience with how they feel about the city manager because they simply haven't had any direct interaction. Or maybe they're basing it on a news article they read or some discussion on Facebook about somebody else's interaction with the city manager. So it seemed, I, I just, it's certainly within your purview, but it seems that I, some kind of general testing of the vibe in the city, you could include that still. I just don't know how much data you're going to get about the city manager's performance in that survey.
Madam Mayor, can we maybe think outside the box and maybe have a community meeting for people if they want to come? Say, I love Jason or the city manager, I should say, we can have a meeting prior to evaluation time. Maybe just saying, but I'm very cautious about sending out to the public about a city manager that they probably have never met. And they just hear what they hear. I'm just cautious. If it was me and if it was him, I would be not happy.
Well, I also don't know that it would give an accurate number. Because oftentimes people don't know what the city manager does and if they do have interactions with the city manager, it's not always on a positive thing because they're having to discuss questions that need to be answered or choose. So.
I would be happy to give up a evening for a public setting to hear from the public on that.
I think that that is a great idea. And then folks would show up that felt strongly one way or the other and would have a chance to have a voice. But I agree that just sending it out might be a bit much for a lot of different angles.
Well, and I think it might also set up our city manager to be used as a verbal punching bag. So I think we need to be very careful.
Yeah, we don't want that.
It also inspires taking actions that are going to be seen by the public as being wonderful. And, and you, you'd be, you'd be, the, the motivation on the city manager would be to manage for the likes on Facebook rather than manage for the good of the community. And they're not always the same thing.
I did like your idea just in general about how people are feeling about the city, not connected to any evaluation, but just so that we have that feedback. So maybe quarterly, monthly, however, I feel like that would be valuable, but.
Well, I think even within a survey, sorry, within a survey, you could say, how do you think the city manager is doing? You know, thumbs up, thumbs down, you know, something very simple, but within that survey, you could ask that question. But I don't think we need to make a whole survey about our city manager because he is one of our key employees that we need to protect. And also we're trusting him to take out or carry out the, the will of the council. So we need to make sure we're not throwing him underneath the bus.
You look at what are we trying to do here? We're trying to, you know, just get a feedback. This is just a tool, one tool. You know, within the process where we're, you know, sampling from the public, you know, information on that. So we, we got to keep that part in mind. I do very much like the, the process of say, I'm just picking a timeframe here. So every six months annually, we're surveying the city. The populace of how is the city doing? Cause then that, that tells you really, because it's, it's the city manager's job to run the city. And so that's what we're getting that same, getting that feedback what's going on there. So just that, well, how do we go about this? I really respect you trying to put that in a, you're just a small piece of the tools and not where it's just where it goes out and it's a bitch session and then it lights up on Facebook and, because that doesn't do any of us any good.
I think that if we put out a pop up on our website that said, would you like to take surveys about the city? And they can then evaluate many people that have interactions about the city might just have it in very specific areas. They might be interested in doing that. We can get, like you said, it is a tool. We can get a general idea of how the city is doing. But for city manager, I think we need to these detailed, this detailed evaluation process. It's really on our shoulders to make sure that we have hired a good city manager and then being intentional about how we're getting that evaluation back. So.
But that, that hits what we're after.
That's what we're after.
It's just, it's a tool within that and it's not targeted specifically after you from the public, you add to the city manager.
Right.
It's about city. How are we doing?
Right. So can we go back to the idea of this evaluation goes to the counselors? And a pared down version goes to staff? And would you like further from there with a general survey regarding just the city?
I agree with that.
Yeah.
Yep.
I like it.
I, I agree with that. That's great.
Just a clarification with do you want to have a, the same questionnaire go to all staff or should there be something more detailed for those who have direct inter, interaction with the city manager?
Great clarifying, clarifying question. I think department directors should have the same evaluation that the city councilors have. And then the rest of the staff have a pared down version. What are your guys' thoughts?
Agreed.
That is what we're trying to do.
What, what about like committee chairs or anything like that? Like, should we, I mean, they are a part of the public, you know, they do have interaction.
I don't know. Thoughts on that?
Excuse me. So I'll just say, city manager doesn't interact with planning commission, rarely interacts with community health, rarely interacts with park and tree. And that's kind of where we're at with committees. Okay. So.
That actually helps. Thank you. So we have 15 minutes left. That was that saying we have council in 15 minutes. We can always start late, but I'd like to clarify city attorney process.
Before we go on, you done with that, Madam Mayor, just talking about next steps, we've heard a lot of feedback. And there's certainly is homework for, for staff to tackle. My recommendation would be for staff to take your feedback and put together a draft of these different surveys that then comes back to you for your final review and blessing. Does that sound reasonable?
That does sound reasonable.
Yes.
Yes. But I do want to make sure that we're on the same page regarding city attorney evaluation. Because your job is different than the city manager. Counselors, what are your thoughts? There's a few city attorney evaluations on the back, towards the back.
Have we updated the job description for the attorney?
I don't think it's changes changed since you did the recruitment.
Okay. Well, no, I meant like from like them. Yeah, I don't mind.
And it's enshrined in his contract as well.
Yeah, okay.
So maybe the evaluation process would be determined based on his job description?
That's where I was going with that. Yeah.
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 So I will say my, my, most of my interaction is with, obviously with yourselves, with department heads. I do take questions from frankly, any other staff, staff member, but the main staff members that have taken me up on questions are, tend to be police officers or the code enforcement officer. I've had a couple of finance questions from the, the finance manager. But that's, that's largely my, and then of course, the court staff and the municipal judge I interact with quite a lot.
I would base mine off of what I know, obviously with the interactions, I would like the staff that he's involved with, law enforcement, the court clerks, you know, people that deal with him and then do a survey from there and then base my decision off of his job description. That's pretty basic with him.
Okay.
My opinion.
And the format would be similar to the one that's in here or would the format be similar to the city managers, one of the city managers formats?
I like the shorter form, like Lebanon has.
You like this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the shorter one I like better.
Yeah, agreed.
I do like the numbers though, because the numbers is easier to average out.
Okay. So Lebanon's form, but with numbers associated with it?
The, the scale of five, you mean?
Yes.
Yeah.
Scale of five, same. Yeah.
Is that good with everybody? Yeah. And and then maybe job description attached to it. So we know what we're looking at. Was that as clear as mud or do we have actually some clarity?
I've one, oh, go ahead. Just have one other question. So do we, will they be doing a self-evaluation prior to ours? So we'll be able to see the progress that they can tell us about? Was that part of it in here? I apologize if I missed it.
That's.
So the impression I got was that self-evaluations were desired. The timing of that, I I don't know if that was ever discussed. Whether it's, we do the self-evaluation first and then it goes to you. I don't know. But what are your, if that's what you would like, then probably look into that.
I'd almost rather not see your self-evaluations while I'm doing mine. Just so I can just base it off of my, you know, my interactions and what I think.
So self-evaluations and city councillor evaluations passed out at the same time than all due at the same executive session? And then we'll read it all then? Does that sound like a reasonable process?
Sounds like a long executive session.
Sounds like a long executive session.
Yes.
That's fair.
Yeah.
I'm okay with it.
Madam Mayor, are we gonna is the process going to be, so we have all this information, are we gonna kind of discuss among ourselves and kind of finalize, okay? For this category, yes, we agree with this number based off of all the data. Or is it just going to be a straight?
Correct.
Whatever number comes in.
City Attorney Larson, but my understanding is if you're going to discuss performance, they have to be notified. They have the opportunity to request an open hearing, but if they don't want it deliberated in public, then you can do an executive session. But they do have the right to be involved and have it public if that's what they choose.
Yeah. So I think what you were asking is, do we make our final determination during that executive session?
Right, yeah. So are we just gonna, like, with all the numbers that come in, whoever, is that the final average number? Like, is that what they get? Like, they receive that number? You know what I mean? Or are we gonna kind of go in and discuss? You know, if somebody gets all fives, are we gonna say, yeah, you know, we agree with that? Or are we gonna?
That's a great question.
I think that with a, with a process like this, naturally you're going to have some fuzzy numbers here or there. And I would, I would hate for the numbers to be the only thing considered. And so just because a number is one way or the other on paper, I think there's discussion that is that should take place about that number and why it is the way it is. And so you certainly could have it structured so that each of you do the evaluation, the employee does a self-evaluation. And then that information is aggregated so that in the meeting, you have both your, you have all the individual evaluations, but you also have a spreadsheet showing the averages of everything. And then you can essentially talk with the employee about what the findings are. What your final evaluation at the end of that meeting is can be a mixture of both the results from the questionnaires as well as the discussion with the employee and your discussion with each other.
So I would, I would anticipate that we could change our number in the meeting if we wanted to.
Almost like a calibration, like, okay, let's go through, like, kind of dig down on some of the stuff.
Yeah.
So these are all tools for us, the seven councillors, to evaluate how the employee is doing.
Right.
So, you know, we just use the tools to present that back.
Yes.
And I would say that since this is, since this is a new process for you and for the employees and for the city in general, I would urge that the initial, the first time it's done be kind of a trial run because you're gonna want to make, you're gonna want to tweak the process. You're gonna learn some lessons from whatever questions you put out there. And it may be that there's thing that the lesson is that the employee is doing great and we really need to, you know, modify this questionnaire so that gives us the data that we actually want because what we're getting is maybe not the data we want.
Madam Mayor, so currently, as of today, we only have three councillors on here right now that have been through this process and we have other threes that have not. So I think clarification on what the process was prior and what we're going to go do because they don't know the process. And I think that last time, there was an executive session with us, we discussed the employee and then we did our evaluations, then we can have another one because he, the employee gets their form to fill out theirselves and then we evaluate that. And then we have a meeting with the employee. And then we give him or the person the feedback of what we came up with and we discuss it. So technically, it's like a three-part process. So not one.
Not a one-part process. But yes, this evaluation process, since we're coming up with something new, we will want to look at it. I appreciate city attorney Larson and city manager often being willing to be our test subjects in this. And hopefully we will be gracious with them. So.
One final comment, Mayor, if I may, before, I'm sorry to be talking so much, but before we end, I just wanted to clarify the timelines of what we're talking about because we're putting in a new process. Jason and I have both operated for the past almost year without any knowledge of what this process is. And so just to put it in your frame of reference, we're talking about starting for the next year of our service, this would be the process to be used because I know I have an evaluation coming up. And I would, I would not want to be evaluated with a brand-new process for the time that I wasn't even aware that this is what you wanted to judge me on. That's what I'm saying.
That's fair.
Yeah.
Be the councillor.
No way. We're going, no. Got a week.
Any other councillors comments? Good?
I'm good.
Okay, we'll close this work session out at 6:25 PM.